Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order. The time is 7:38. This is the regular council meeting of March 14th. Clerk, can you please do a roll call?
Councilman Bliss.
I'm here.
Mayor Protem Corbett. Councilman Fleming.
Here.
Councilor Robach.
Here.
Councilman Soltis. Council Wright.
Here.
Mayor Greyston.
I am here, thank you. Can I please get a motion to excuse Mayor Protem Corbett and Councilman Soltis?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to excuse Councilman Corbett, Councilman Soltis. That's it, right?
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, support.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. They are excused. Thank you. The invocation and pledge this evening will be led by Councilman Bliss. Mr. Bliss? Please stand if you are able.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, your wisdom, and your support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussions that will lead to plans which will enable our city to move forward. Let us remember that this meeting is important because it's filled with many opportunities for us to take action and make improvements to the community we call home. Help us to see the significance of even the smallest piece of positive change and work with us to serve this city and all of its residents who are all relying on us to hear their voice. Finally, continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish, is simply to make the community a more prosperous one with each and every passing day. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. First up, we have approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions this evening?
Your Honor?
Councilman Bliss?
I might need some help with the language, but I believe we're making an amendment to, was it F six?
Yes.
And that is the addition of the proposal for sewer rate update and outreach assistance from OHM advisors.
All right. Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded for this addition. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Any other additions or deletions this evening? All right, seeing none. First up, we have the public hearing. This is for the special land use at 630 or 630 East 11 Mile Road, the outdoor seating.
The applicant is requesting special use approval for an outdoor seating area associated with the restaurant that serves alcohol. The subject property is the restaurant known as Woodpile BBQ located at 630 East 11 Mile Road in the Downtown Development District. It is currently zoned B three general business. The applicant proposes to construct a covered outdoor patio area adjacent to the front facade of Woodpile BBQ. Per the project narrative, approximately 20 to 26 seats will be relocated from the indoor dining area to the patio during the summer months. The concept site plan depicts a 36-inch high decorative enclosure around the patio and ornamental plants between the patio and the public sidewalk. Per Section 10.32610, outdoor seating areas associated with restaurants that serve alcohol require special use approval through City Council. City Council also recently rezoned the property immediately to the west, which was 26744 Osmond from R three residential to B three general business, which the applicant intends to use for additional parking. The proposed use is consistent with compatible and compatible with the description and intent of the commercial future use land designations as contained in the 2021 master plan. The proposed use generally satisfies the special use approval review standards and criteria listed in Section 10.2014. The site plan review committee reviewed the proposed special approval request at the February 23 meeting and did not cite any concerns regarding the proposed special use. Separate site plan review committee approval will be required for the final site plan. Based on these findings, staff recommends that City Council approve the requested special use with the condition that the final site plan satisfied the use-specific standards for outdoor seating areas contained in Section 10.3185.
All right, thank you. At this point, I'm going to open the meeting to public comment specifically for this outdoor seating land use that's being requested. So if anyone has anything they want to say regarding this, this is your opportunity. Okay, seeing no public comment, I'm going to close that. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Councilman Bliss?
I move that we approve the requested special use as requested by Woodpile BBQ with the condition that the site plan will satisfy the use-specific standards for outdoor seating areas contained in Section 10 dot 3185.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, I'll support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Council Wright?
As a connoisseur of grilled meats, I would just like that. I think this is a fantastic idea for our downtown area, and I think this is the type of thing that we need to bring to the city. So I'm voting yes. I'm excited. Yay for grilled meat.
Is there any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. All right, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have meeting open to the public. So this is the opportunity for anyone in the public who wishes to speak. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, give your name, address, anything that identifies you with the city, and please direct your comments to me. With that, floor is open.
Jennifer Zemarszlik, 649 East Tarwood. I just found out that Amazon is taking over some contract from Landmark next to BJ's, and I thought I would ask, it would be clarified to the public why that changeover happened when it originally wasn't Amazon? Could that be clarified?
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has any comments?
Hi, Martha Covert, Edward Avenue. Last meeting, everybody was talking about the different boards and commissions, and Emily has six, five, whatever. Sean has three. You have one. Mr. Wright, brand new, has two. Mr. Bliss has one. Why does Mr. Soltis have zero? Why? Why doesn't he have to engage with the community? If that's, that's not what we want. We want people here who are gonna engage with us. Emily walks with people on Tuesdays, cleans up. I mean, Quinn, you've been on council two months and you've already been on, you're on two committees? Or is it three? Is it two? Still, I don't understand. If you don't want to be, you know, what's the word I want? If you don't want to work with the people, why do you sit here? Why do you tell me how you're gonna spend my tax dollars, but you can't come to a meeting I'm at? You can't come to a function. I have a huge problem with that, and I think something needs to be done. If you're not gonna take anything, you're not gonna sit on any committees, you're not gonna sit on any boards, don't sit on this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to address council this evening? All right, we have one person who has sent an email in. I am going to close public comment here, though.
Hey, this is from Mary Bush at 1117 East Hudson. I'm grateful we have landlord licensing as a way to maintain rental property and keep our city from becoming blighted. However, I am concerned about the property owners who, upon notice of the requirements, choose to leave the property empty and not meet the city requirements. My sister lives next door to such a property. The address is 25616 Dai. It has sat empty all winter and has no garage door. I'm sure critters with long tails have found refuge in the mess. My suggestion is that unless the house is a primary residence, that one, the property owner make a good faith effort to meet the requirements of landlord license and proper rental codes and meet the standards within 90 days, or be subject to a $75 per day fine that must be resolved prior to collecting any rents, or $150 per day if found in violation by collecting rents without a license. Two, the property owner makes a good faith effort to rent the property and shall be fined $50 per day that is empty after 60 days, not to exceed $1,500 per month for the value of the property. Three, liens be placed against the property for violations not resolved within six months of the adjudicated fines. Also, in a recent canvass, I found several folks who are reportedly renters, but the property is not listed under the landlord license. These include 25836 Miracle, 25616 Miracle, 25460 Miracle. Perhaps the list just isn't updated. Please help me protect our homeowner property values here in the South, and thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone, for your comments. We've got communications. We have the resignation of Allison Fleming from the Crime Commission. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor? I move that we accept the resignation of Allison Fleming from the Crime Commission and declare the seat vacant. Also, extend the proper thanks.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Oh, Your Honor?
Please.
Sure, I'll support.
All right, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, I will just make my comment. So in the summer, when I rebooted the Crime Commission, I was the alternate, but I did go to two of the meetings, and Allison was there, and she contributed, and really appreciated what she did bring to the role. So very much, I personally like to thank her for her contributions. And with that, all in favor of accepting the resignation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, under reports, we have two. One is from the DPS director. Mrs. Marsh, turn report.
Provided for council is the 2022 Summer Maintenance Agreement for the Road Commission for Oakland County for 14 mile, 12 mile, and John R. from 14 mile to almost 12 mile. Under this contract, the city provides street sweeping, weed and grass mowing, and litter pickup along the county roads. This agreement is at the same level as 2021 for $12,072.95 for the year. Accordingly, staff and I recommend that council approve the contract and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign on behalf of the city. The RCOC is requesting that the city invoice the road commission 65% for the contract September 15.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Council Wright?
I'd like to make a motion that the City Council approve the agreement for the Road Commission for Oakland County and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign on behalf of the city. The RCOC is requesting and invoice the road commission for 65% of the total contract amount on September 15, 2022, and invoice the remaining 35% upon completion of the last maintenance activity.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
I'll support. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. And then we have from the City Manager, the confirmation of the Library Director.
I'm very excited today to be asking council to confirm my appointment of Vanessa Verder Morris. I apologize if I just butchered your name, as the new Library Director effective March the 28th, and she has joined us today. So if you have any questions or want to come up and introduce yourself?
Yeah, before we do make the motion, I would like her to speak, and I just do want to let you know I was going to come out and talk to you, but we had a closed session that went a little bit longer, so we started late. But please, I would love to hear from you.
Well, my name is Vanessa Verdon Morris, and, you know, I've been in libraries for the past 20 years, kind of worked my way up from library assistant to director of a class six library. I moved to the area about a year and a half ago, and just the idea of using my skills locally to benefit the community rather than making a long drive out to Taylor seems like a wonderful opportunity for both myself and the city. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Thank you. Hopefully in a moment, I'll be welcoming you. All right, what is the wish of council?
Your Honor? I move that council confirms the appointment of Vanessa Verden Morris as the new Library Director for the City of Madison Heights effective Monday, March 22, 2022. It's the 28th. Says 22. 28, whatever.
Is there support?
Your Honor, support.
All right, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor? Yeah, so I'm, I guess, fortunate to serve on the Library Advisory Board, and, you know, we met briefly when you came out before. I think your application had just went in, ink had barely dried on that thing, and you were at the Library Advisory Meeting just to be able to see the volunteers, hear the discussion, and, you know, I was really impressed with that, and frankly, it gives me a lot to be excited about, because if that was your commitment to hearing what our residents want before you took the job, I cannot wait to see what it looks like after this confirmation and when you really get rolling. So welcome to the city. We're glad to have you.
All right, is anyone else?
I'll just say, Your Honor, welcome. I'm thrilled that you're here, and I think that, you know, we're gonna have big transitions in the library, and so I'm excited for new and fresh and exciting leadership to take us to the future. Welcome.
Your Honor?
Please.
On behalf of my three little daughters, I would like to say we're excited to have you and to see the exciting things you do.
All right. No other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Congratulations and welcome to the city. All right, up next, we have bid awards purchases. Six this evening. First is the purchasing coordinator for code enforcement mowing and debris removal.
On January the 28th, a bid for code enforcement mowing and debris removal was posted at City Hall and on the Mitten website, where we emailed it to 280 vendors. Out of the 280 who received the notice online, 25 downloaded the bid documents. On February the 10th, only one electronic bid was received. The qualified bidder was Triple D Lawn Care and Property Preservation LLC with unit pricing of $45 per single lot, 75 for double, and 125 for large lot mowing, and 154 per hour for debris removal. Staff and I would respectfully request that council award the bid to Triple D Lawn Care and Property Preservation LLC for a contract through June the 30th, 2023, at the unit rates indicated, with the option to extend on a year-to-year basis thereafter upon written agreement by both parties. We would also respectfully request that council authorize the city to contract with alternative vendors in the event that the contract with Triple D Lawn Care and Property Preservation is canceled due to nonperformance or other issues, provided that the alternative vendor guarantees unit pricing at or below Triple D's rate.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor? I'll give it a go. I move that we award the bid to Triple D's Lawn Care and Property Preservation LLC. The contract would go through June 30th, 2023, at all of the unit rates that were indicated, with the option to extend on a year-to-year basis afterwards upon written agreement of both parties. I would also like to include my motion, the authorization for the city to contract with alternate vendors in the event that something goes wrong, if this is canceled due to nonperformance or any other issues, provided that the alternate vendor has unit pricing at or below the pricing in this agreement.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Councilor Robach?
Support.
Thank you. Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, I do have a question. I don't know if Cory's here tonight. This, one of the things that those does is the debris removal, like the springtime debris removal, correct? So like, I know this time of year, there's usually like, this contract goes through and removes a bunch of the, like, built-up debris over the time. Is that correct? Is that gonna be happening with this contract, and when does that start?
Your Honor, basically, this is just for code enforcement?
Oh, just code enforcement?
Yeah, this is just code enforcement.
Oh, the other debris, not the?
Correct.
DPS debris?
Correct, yeah, just debris for code enforcement.
Gotcha. Thank you, sorry.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, comments?
Your Honor?
Please.
Just one clarification. The unit cost regarding large lot mowing is $125 per quarter hour for the large lot mowing, and it's $150 per quarter hour for debris removal. So it's not a flat fee of 125 or a flat fee of 150. It's based on time.
All right, thank you. Other comments from council? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Next up, we've got three from DPS. First is the major and local sectional concrete repairs.
Due to the continuing increase in the price of concrete materials and labor, it has become necessary to bid the upcoming non-R major and local sectional concrete repair program. On March the 2nd, four sealed bids were received at City Hall by the deadline. Upon review and as identified in the attached recommendation letter from Norwicke and Frous Our Consulting City Engineers, Ciparone Contracting of Southfield, Michigan was the low bid. Ciparone has completed several similar projects for the City of Madison Heights as well as other area municipalities in recent years. Based on these facts, staff and I concur with the recommendation of our city engineer and recommend that City Council award the bid for the 2022 major and local sectional concrete repairs to the lowest responsible bidder, Ciparone Contracting of Southfield, Michigan, for a total project amount of $1,091,948.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor? I'll move that council concurs with the recommendation of the city engineer and recommends that we award the bid for the 2022 major and local sectional concrete repairs to the lowest responsible bidder, Ciparone Contracting of Southfields, for the total project amount of $1,091,948.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, all support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Please.
Should be noted that the bid award does not automatically commit the city to any specific projects in the upcoming 2023 fiscal year. Projects would not be authorized to start until funding was made available through the normal budget process. And assuming that these projects would then be constructed by the contractor that council's got a motion on the floor to award the bid to.
All right, thank you. Is there any other discussion or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Next up, also DPS, the R three residential road projects.
As with major and local sectional projects, it became necessary to rebid the R three program due to continuing increases in the price for concrete materials and labor. On March the 2nd, four sealed bids were received by City Hall by the deadline. Upon review and as identified in the attached recommendation letter from Norwicke and Frous Our Consulting Engineers, Ciparone Contracting of Southfield, Michigan was again the low bidder. They also provided pricing for years two and three at a 6% and 12% increase respectively. In addition to completing several similar projects in the City of Madison Heights as well as other municipalities, we've enjoyed excellent working relationship with Ciparone, and their workmanship has proven to be without reproach. Based upon historical, current trends in cost and availability of materials and labor, staff and I concur with the recommendation of the city engineer and recommend that City Council award the bid for the 2022 R three residential road projects to the lowest responsible bidder, Ciparone Contracting, Inc. of Southfield, for the total project cost of $1,494,824.50. We also recommend that options two and three be exercised, making this a three-year bid.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Councilman Bliss?
I think it's my turn now. I move that we concur with the recommendation of our city engineer and concur with the recommendation of our city engineer and award the bid for the 2022 R three residential road projects to the lowest responsible bidder, Ciparone Contracting, Inc. of Southfield, for the total project amount of $1,494,824.50. Additionally, I would include that the options for years two and three in this bid be exercised, making this a total contract of three years.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Councilman Fleming?
I will support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Sherman?
Same note as before, and that is that the bid award does not automatically commit the city to any projects in the upcoming 2022, 2023 fiscal year or the other years of the contract. Projects would not be authorized to start until funding was made available through the normal budget process, and these projects, assuming approval, would then be constructed by the Ciparone Contracting under the contract.
All right, thank you. There any other questions or comments from council? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. And then last one from DPS, the replacement of the fire department vehicle number 704.
At the regular City Council meeting of October the 25th, council awarded the replacement of vehicle 704 to Todd Wenzel Chevrolet. A purchase order was issued, and the truck was on order. On January 24th, we were notified that General Motors had canceled this truck order. Since finding out that this replacement vehicle has been canceled, our motor pool supervisor has been working diligently to find a replacement vehicle. We were notified by Bill Campbell at Signature Ford that an extremely limited amount of F-150s were confirmed ordered at state cooperative pricing and would be available in April. We have confirmed that one of these trucks meet our needs. The truck is $9,898 over the original budgeted amount of $36,000. Staff anticipates the pending sale of vehicle 702 will cover this deficit. Council needs three motions. The first motion would be to rescind the approval of the prior purchase of one Chevy Silverado 1500 pickup truck to Todd Wenzel Chevrolet for $31,065. That will require five votes. We need a second motion to approve a budget amendment for the $9,898 to account 1013369850. That, again, would require supermajority, in this case unanimous, five votes. And third, approve the purchase of one 2022 F-150 Supercrew to Signature Ford of Owasso, Michigan, at quoted $45,898.
All right, thank you. So we have three motions that we are going to take separately, and they need to be, in this case, because we only have five people here, they would need to be unanimous to pass. So regarding the first one, rescinding, what is the wish of council?
Your Honor, I'll make the motion that we rescind the approval of the prior purchase of one Chevy Silverado 1500 pickup truck from Todd Wenzel Chevrolet for $31,065.
All right, is there support?
Your Honor?
Your honor.
Is there? Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right. And once again, we would need to have a unanimous vote in order for this to pass. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries, 5-0. Next up, we have the second motion, which is the budget amendment. What is the wish of council?
Your honor, I move that we approve a budget amendment of $9,898 to account 101-336-9850000.
All right. Is there support?
Your honor, all support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Once again, a reminder that we do need to have unanimous, in this case, for this to pass, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. And the third motion, what is the wish of council?
Your honor.
That's right.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase of one 2022 F-150 Super Crew to Signature Ford of Owasso, Michigan, as quoted in the amount of $45,898.00.
All right. Thank you. Is there support?
Your honor, all support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your honor.
Ms. Sherman.
Simple majority on this, on this motion.
Yes. Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, from the city manager, we have bid package number two, the steel and roofing materials. Mrs. Marsh.
Considering the construction environment, supply chain issues, and lead times for certain products and equipment, early bid packages have been released for structural steel and roofing insulation. This strategy provides better pricing and cost effective sequencing of construction available in the design build delivery for the Civic Center Complex project. City council is being asked to award the bid for structural steel to Ross Structural Steel, Inc., and roofing insulation to Benson's Building Supply for an amount included, including allowances and contingencies of $553,257.
All right. Thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your honor.
Councilwoman Bliss.
I move that we award the bid for structural steel to Ross Structural Steel, Inc., and roof installation to Benson's Building Supply for an amount, including allowances and contingencies, of up to $553,257.
All right. Thank you. Is there support?
Your honor.
Mr. Wright.
Your honor.
Mr. Fleming.
All support.
All right. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. And then, the final is F6, which was added on today. What is the wish of council? And this is actually two votes, so we need to do a budget amendment, and then we would need to approve the contract. So what is the wish of council?
So to help with the motion, the budget amendment would be for $76,590-590-8180.
So can I get a motion to make that amendment?
Yeah, your honor, before I forget the number, I'd like to make a motion that we do a budget amendment for $76,000 to 590-560-8180.
All right. Thank you.
It was 590-590, but good effort.
590-590-8180.
All right. Is there support?
Your honor, all support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any comments, questions by council? All right. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries, 5-0. And then finally, motion for the contract. What is the wish of council?
Your honor.
Councilwoman Bliss.
I move that we accept the proposal for sewer rate update and outreach assistance from OHM Advisors at a total project cost not to exceed $76,000.
All right. Thank you. Is there support?
Your honor.
Mr. Wright.
All support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have ordinances. This is the first reading for ordinance 2179, the precinct boundary descriptions, polling locations, and precinct numbers. Mrs. Marsh, you have a report.
Yes, it's kind of long, but I wanted to make sure we didn't miss anything and the public heard it all. So, due to the 2020 census, the state of Michigan has undergone a reapportionment of elected offices, including the U.S. House of Representatives, the State Senate, and the State House of Representatives and County Commissioner. Every precinct in Madison Heights has been affected by these changes, and all of our elected official representative districts have changed. For both the U.S. House and State Senate, the city of Madison Heights has been kept whole. In the State House, all but precinct seven is in the same district. Our new members are as, new numbers are as follows. The U.S. House of Representatives will be District 11, the State Senate Representative, District 3, State House Representative, District 8, all precincts except for precinct 7, and State House Representative, District 57, precinct 7 only, and County Commissioner will be District 3. Due to the delayed approval of the final maps by the Michigan Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission, we just received the final maps in January. When making changes to the district maps, it is appropriate to review and make any changes to precinct boundaries at the same time. After review and analysis, the city clerk is recommending the following precinct changes. One, change the number of precincts from 11 precincts to nine. This would be accomplished by permanently combining Districts 5 and Precincts 6. These two precincts have been temporarily combined over the past two election cycles with no issues already. Combining one half of Precinct 1, that would be north of Lincoln, into Precinct 2, and the other one half of Precinct 1, south of Lincoln, into Precinct 3. Previously, Precinct 2 was our second lowest registered voter turnout. By splitting Precinct 1 into these precincts, both Precinct 2 and 3 will have similar registered voter counts. Historically, we have combined two precincts into non-federal and state elections due to lower counts. Number two, changing the precinct numbers of combined precincts 5 and 6 to the new Precinct 1, change Precinct 11 to Precinct 5, and change current Precinct 10 to Precinct 6. This is just an administrative change and will allow for precincts to be numbered 1 through 9 consecutively. Precincts 1 through 4 would be Madison District, Precinct 2 will also have a small number of Royal Oak School voters, and Precinct 5 through 9 will be in the Lampier District. In addition, the city clerk is recommending these modifications due to the change in voting patterns in the city. Since the passage of Proposal 18-3 in 2018, over 70% of our turnout has been through absentee voting with only 30% in person, reducing the stress on the polling locations on Election Day. This will also be cost savings to the city, reducing the number of ballot styles to be printed, as well as decreasing the number of required election inspectors we hire for each election. As required by MCL 168.6613, on March the 9th, 2022, the Election Commission approved a resolution with these proposed changes. According to the city charter, precinct changes also require an ordinance change. Based on these considerations, staff recommends that city council adopt ordinance 2179, precinct boundary descriptions, polling locations, and precinct numbers on first reading and schedule the second reading for March the 28th.
All right. Thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your honor.
Councilwoman Warbach.
I move that council adopts ordinance 2179, precinct boundary descriptions, polling locations, and precinct numbers on first reading and schedule the second reading for March 28, 2022.
All right. Thank you. Is there support?
Your honor, all support.
All right. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your honor.
Please.
Just, well, first and foremost, to comment that I think that this is a great move forward. I think simplifying and condensing things down is only going to make life easier, not just for staff, but for residents as well. I guess my question is, how, how did we land on just these precincts as far as merging? For example, one of the ones that always confused me was the section of Precinct 8 that's right next to the voting location for Precinct 10? That, like, one street away, like, it doesn't, it never made sense to me, but I understand that there's a lot more to it, so love to get some understanding around why these ones, not other ones, and so on.
So the state law requires that election precincts cannot be bigger than 2,999 voters, and Precinct 8, well, first of all, that was why these precincts were picked, because they were below those numbers. But if you took that section out of Precinct 8 and put it into Precinct 10, it would, or 9, I mean, Precinct 9, it would go over that number of the 2,999. But there is some movement at the state level that may increase the precinct size to 4,000 or 5,000. I don't, can't guarantee that will happen, but in the future, if it does happen, we will definitely look at that.
Yeah, your honor.
Precinct 8 is a very, very big, active precinct.
Yes.
And that's my, our heaviest voting precinct, so I would like to make some changes there, but there's no wiggle room in any of the other precincts while the number remains at 2,999.
Okay. Yeah, that one was always awkward, because you had everybody off of, like, Rose, Mulan, Dulong, like, it didn't, they have to then go to the active adult center, which, you know, I guess my second follow-up question is, when we consolidate, what will that precinct look like when we finish the central campus here?
So we, I haven't looked at those issues yet, but I mean, it's on my mind, so I'm looking at possibility of reaching out to the school district to see if there's another facility that we ought to be able to relocate Precinct 8 to.
I think, I think we, and I could be wrong for, you know, if there's any, you know, historians around, but I think that we used to vote back when Page Middle School was the high school. I believe that was a voting location.
That's, that's the one I'm, I'm going to ask them about. I've sort of already reached out, not through the direct channels yet, to see if that might be a possibility. And we have used that precinct location when a school, when the school was under construction. When Precinct 9 was under, or 10 was under construction, we used that as an alternative location, so that, I, I would think that they would be open to that, but I have not directly approached them yet.
Your honor, i- i- if it would be possible, when we make these announcements to the residents, if we could include that as well, if there's a way that we could finalize before we push out the announcements, just do all, everything in one fell swoop, because I'd imagine, even if it's, oh, gosh, it's, it's a year and some change out? I don't know. I, I think that we should make the announcement, and people should know what's coming, if we can.
I'll, I can reach out to them.
All right. Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments?
I do have.
Please.
When is the time period that the voters will get a new voter ID card that will be with the new numbers on them?
So, once the, the ordinance is passed on second reading, then I can go, move forward with notifying them. However, there is some legis, there is some lawsuits at the state level regarding the reapportionment process, and I sort of want to wait to make sure that all gets played out first, so that we don't print 22,000 voter registration cards and have to redo them. So I'm, I'm hoping to do it June. Sorry, did you say June? June, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay. And our next election is August.
August 2nd.
Okay. All right. Councilwoman Warbach, did you have?
That was the question.
Okay. All right. Is there any other? All right. Seeing no more, seeing no more, I just want to say to the clerk, thank you so much for all the work that you have done on this. You know, I appreciate all the constraints that you're under, and you're managing to finagle and make it work, so thank you.
You're welcome. And I just want to give a shout out to Madhu, our GIS person. She helped me a lot with this.
All right. So thank you to Madhu as well. All right. Seeing no other discussion or questions, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Next up, we have approval of the regular council meetings from February 28th. What is the wish of council?
Your honor.
Councilwoman Bliss.
I move that we approve the minutes of February 28th, 2022, as printed.
All right. Thank you. Is there support?
Your honor.
That's right. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Next up, we have the boards and commission appointments. So last meeting, we went through all our boards and commissions, we did the appointments, did the reappointments, for everything except for the DDA, and that was because last year the DDA requested that they bring their, their nominee to the mayor. So this is a mayor's appointment. I can choose to listen to them, I can choose to not listen to them, I choose to listen to them. And so I would like a motion to reappoint Gord Davignon and Ricky Dussler to the DDA. I'm just looking to see what their... All right.
2028-26.
All right. To 2028-26. So if I could get a motion from council to confirm my nomination, please?
Your honor.
Councilwoman Warbach.
I move that council concurs with your recommendation to appoint Ricky Bussler and Gordon Davignon to regular terms on the DDA, terms expiring 2028-26.
All right. Thank you. Is there support?
Your honor, all support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your honor.
Ms. Sherman.
Do you want to have separate votes for Anne Brownfield redevelopment, or do you want to?
Oh, Anne Brownfield redevelopment, I'm actually...
I'm sorry. Yes.
Sorry. My, my mistake there, yes.
I include that in my motion.
Thank you. And support includes that?
Your honor, all support again.
Thank you. All right. Motion has been made and seconded to reappoint to the DDA and to the Brownfield Development. Is there any discussion? All right. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. All right. Motion carries. I have one other appointment that I'd like to make. Can I do that? We did not at the beginning.
I can do it.
Okay. So earlier in the meeting, we accepted the resignation of Allison Fleming from Crime Commission, and I would like to move Peg Marantet up. She is an alternate, and I would like to move her up to the regular position that has been vacated by Allison Fleming. If I could get a motion for that.
What was the name, your honor?
It's Peg Marantet.
Okay. Marantet?
Marantet. It's, it would be to the position held until August 2023.
Your honor, what was the date? You said August what?
2023.
I know, but usually we need actual, 31st, thank you. All right, so your honor, I move that we concur with your recommendation to appoint Peg Marantet to the Crime Commission with a regular term expiring 8/31/23. And do we need to declare her alternacy vacant? And declare her alternacy vacant.
All right, thank you. Can I get support?
Your honor.
Support.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Just want to make the statement that Peg was actually on the Crime Commission for the last, I don't know how many years, so I know that she's going to do a great job. She always has, so. With that, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. I am, at this point, going to leave her alternate position open. And that is it, so that concludes this evening's regular business. I invite closing comments from counsel, starting with Councilwoman Bliss.
Your honor, yeah, I don't have much this evening, just, I guess, a call for those to get involved. I said it at the last meeting, and I'll continue to say it. We've got some great boards and commissions in this community. We're doing a lot of great things. The, the woodpile expansion, all of that was handled with the Planning Commission. We've, you know, we've got a meeting tomorrow night, so join us at the Planning Commission. Arts Board, we've got a meeting on the 23rd. Join us for that. A lot of exciting things going on in the city. I know the HREC just had a meeting last, last week, on the 9th. We have a board for everything that you're interested in. If you're a resident looking to get involved, please join our boards and commissions.
All right, thank you. Council Wright?
I would just like to echo that sentiment and remind everyone that we are getting ready for the second annual Juneteenth. When we talked about woodpile, I was like, oh, what a perfect segue, because we're looking for folks to participate in this year's RIP competition, not as judges, but as participants, and we're also looking for vendors. So if you want to get involved with the Juneteenth RIP competition, or Juneteenth in general, I encourage you to find it on Facebook or find it on the website. It's a great opportunity to get involved with the community, and it's an event for everyone. And last year was amazing, and the smell was great, and the music was great, and Mark, Mark came, I think everybody came out, so it was, it was a fantastic time. I also want to say congratulations to our first responders and our law enforcements who were promoted to captain and lieutenant. There were a couple of promotions, and I wasn't here last meeting, so I want to say congratulations to those guys. And finally, a very special thing happened to my wife and I, nine years ago, right about now, our rainbow baby was born, so I just want to wish her a very happy birthday, and that's it for me.
All right, thank you. Mr. Sherman?
I would just say welcome aboard to our new library director, wishing her the best in her new position, and that's it, your honor.
Thank you. Mrs. Marsh?
No comment.
Any more clerks office this evening? Council Warburg?
Couple things I have, spring, the weather today has brought spring to my mind, and very excited about that. In the last several years, I've organized spring cleanup on the, you generally focus on John R., because over the winter, that, that debris really builds up, and I know DPS goes out and does a good job of that at some point, so I'm going to be talking to them very soon and figuring out when they're doing that, so we can coordinate and kind of get some, last time we did it, we ended up with, there was about 30 people came out, pile of trash that we were able to collect within a couple of hours together, working together, you know, along the sides of the road, really improved our cities, the way that we present ourselves, and it's a great time to spend together with the community. So I'm looking forward to getting that set up again this spring, probably early, mid-April. Also, I am headed out to Pontiac tomorrow night to, to attend the State of the County address, to hear from our county executive, Dave Coulter, and so I'm looking forward to that and hearing, you know, what the county is going to be able to be doing, hopefully more for us here in the city of Madison Heights. I don't know about you all, but I often feel like we're the redheaded stepsister of Oakland County. People don't really remember that we even are in Oakland County, and it gets old. So I want to, I'm looking forward to that. And then on Wednesday, I'm spending my day with some, some of my colleagues over at, in Lansing, at the Michigan Municipal League Conference for the day. I'm going to be spending just Wednesday out there, but there's some really great things to be able to do out there and talk with our legislators and, you know, really work on lobbying for some of the things that are important to us here in the city, and talking to those folks that can make some of those decisions at state level. So I'm looking forward to that, and that's all I have got tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fleming?
Yeah, I wanted to say thank you, first of all, to Andy, Congressman Andy Levin, who actually worked on obtaining our city almost $500,000 for the building of our new library and other renovations and modernization of our city, city complexes right here. It's something that we really needed to help us out, get those done. Secondly, I want to say welcome to the library director, the Mrs. Verdun Morris. Welcome to the city. Second, thirdly, I wanted to say that I attended the Jeffrey Brozek Healthy Heart Foundation's announcement that they were studying their foundation that was last week on Tuesday, and what their foundation is doing is providing cardiac education and screening for first responders, which is a really great thing. There was Jeffrey Brozek who passed away due to a cardiac event, and this is going to help finding those, having those extra screenings on top of regular screenings that are going to be able to prevent and possibly find cardiac issues before they actually happen, and I think that's a really great foundation. And I hope that everybody can look it up and maybe give us some support there. His wife is also a member of our police department. Finally, the, the fire department is selling shirts for the Autism Awareness Campaign that's ongoing right now, and the proceeds are going to be going to the Healing Haven who provides, who provides also autism therapy services here in Madison Heights. That's another great cause that I think everybody should get involved in, so that's it.
All right, thank you. Want to say welcome to our new library director, our almost new library director. I'm excited to see what you're going to bring to us, so lots of changes going on at the library. I was over there today picking up a book in the kids' section, and I saw they had lots of St. Patrick's Day books there, and I saw that they had Easter books there, and I thought, this is just the perfect example of one of the projects that the HREC is working on, because Passover is coming before Easter, and they didn't have any of those books out. So, you know, just making sure that everybody is included and just including those books, and those are the two spring holidays I'm aware of. I'm sure there are more. So it's just a great project for them to work on. I know that they're working on a book club, so, you know, this is one, religion is one, one area. With, with the shirts for the autism last year, I don't remember the number, but they were able, the fire, our fire department on their own chose to do this, and they, the money they raised went towards a playground over at Healing Haven. It's just, just a little playground for the kids, but it's great. You know, so that's, again, another area that we need to be looking at, is people of different abilities, just making sure that everybody is included. So really, really looking forward to see what the groups are doing with that. With respect to the, the email comment that we had this evening about vacant properties, I have asked legal to, our legal team, to look into that, but I know that when I started on council four years ago, I had similar requests, you know, what can we do about these vacant properties? And I was pretty much told, you know, it's, it's not constitutional. If someone wants to buy a property and just let it sit there and do nothing, there's not really anything we can do. As long as it's up to code, there's not really anything we can do. And, and I've heard this from people, that there are houses that have been empty for 30, 40 years. You know, I've never seen anybody there, and they're not, I don't, I don't know what we can do, but I have asked legal to look into it again. So we'll keep you updated if I hear of anything, but as it stands, I don't think we, we are able to do anything there. This, this Thursday is St. Patrick's Day, and the DDA is hosting a green crawl, thanks to Jennifer Zlomarszlik, who has been spearheading this for the last month, I think. She seems to eat and sleep green. So, you know, it's just, it's an opportunity for, for us and for our neighboring communities to take a look at what our different eateries in the DDA have to offer. So I want to thank Ms. Zlomarszlik for that, and I want to invite everybody, you know, it's, it's a full day, it's not the traditional pub crawl. It's, you can start your day at 8:00 in the morning. Mia's is offering, I think, Lucky Charms and Green Pancakes, so there's a variety of things for all ages, and then, of course, there is going to be, you know, some different green alcoholic beverages for those who are of age who would like to partake. So I just encourage everyone to take a look at that and do what you can to support our businesses. Once again, I just want to apologize for starting late. We had a closed session that went a little bit, a little bit longer than planned. Want to thank Council Warburg for going to the State of the County tomorrow. I'm not quite sure why the county is doing their, doing this on the same day that the state is hosting something for elected officials. There seemed to be a bit of a disconnect there, so thank you, Council Warburg, for, for doing that. And with respect to council involvement, it has been a while since anyone has said anything to me about this, but I just want to remind everybody that council has one employee, her name is Melissa Marsh. She is our one employee, and everyone who works for the city works for her. The, myself and the six other members of council work for you. And so if you, if you have concerns about one of our council members, absolutely, you can come to council and you can voice your opinion, but there isn't very much we can do. So if you have concerns about Councilwoman Soltis, I encourage you to reach out to him and let him know that you have these concerns. With respect to our boards and commissions, we make these appointments at the beginning every two years. He was the alternate for the HREC. He chose to relinquish that role when, when Council Wright came on. He, he relinquished the role. Council Wright now has that role. I mean, if, if there's another board that he is more interested in, that he would like to be involved in, he could always have that conversation with a member of council and see if they would switch. You know, perhaps there's something that Council Warburg is working on, and yes, she does have a lot of, of boards that she is working on, so perhaps there's something that she maybe would like to give up and whatever, but that is something that takes place between council members. The mayor generally sits on the DDA and the Planning Commission. In the summer, when I rebooted the Crime Commission, knowing that it was just for a short period of time, I said I would be the alternate. I did go to two of the three meetings with the expectation that Councilwoman Soltis would be at all of them, but at least at the one that I didn't make. So I, I do encourage you to reach out to your council members, and, and if someone has concerns, something that they would like to address with me, absolutely, you can reach out to me. I'm happy to talk to you. I don't always answer my phone, I don't always get back right away, but I will eventually get back, so just keep that in mind. And I think that is about it. I'm highly impressed that we started this meeting late, and we had a ton of things, and it's still taken us just one hour, so kudos to everybody here. The time is 8:37. Our next meeting is February 28th, and this meeting is adjourned. Good night.